I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up is approval of the agenda, but before we approve the agenda, I'd like to remove item 8F, which is the Wisconsin School District Report Card, because while we may have the information, it's not to be released until tomorrow.
Revisited by day.
No, they changed their mind.
Oh, they changed their mind.
They delayed.
Why is that?
I can explain now, or yeah, why not?
Go ahead.
Yeah. They had some variances with the scoring, so they took a little more time to review and allowed the, like last year, districts to contest. And so, we were hoping that everything would be available today, because they were hoping for some releases on Friday, but tonight, midnight, or 12:01, it is available.
12:01.
So...
It'll be on their webpage.
On their webpage, yes.
But not ours.
Probably not.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented and amended.
Any other discussion? Jody?
Ryan?
Yes.
Stuart?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
All right, announcements and recognitions, we have none. Student report, Ally Cutter-Hagan is here from the high school.
Okay, so Lakeview has had an amazing month, highlighted by a visit from New York Yankee and Lakeview alum Ben Heller. He shared his story about his journey to the major leagues and made some great connections to the habits of mind that all of the students are learning. Lakeview loves their PTA-sponsored feeding program will begin this week, providing students a little extra food to get them through the weekends or holidays. Almost $1,500 and over 4,000 pounds of food have been donated at this time towards this cause. Lincoln School held their quarterly leadership assembly honoring students who have exhibited great leadership skills and who have been good role models for others. The students led the assembly, took a look at their behavior for the quarter, and determined ways to always improve. At the end of the assembly, everyone sang "Lean on Me," recognizing that they all need each other to make their school great. Construction continues, and students were able to take a construction tour to learn about the process and see firsthand the new addition to their school. Students were able to ask questions and learn about all the construction. They're thankful for this opportunity and look forward to seeing the progress as the addition gets enclosed. Washington Elementary School will be celebrating its recognition as a 2017 National Blue Ribbon School throughout the school year. The celebration was held on November 9th with its students, staff, and invited guests. Washington Student Council received the Blue Ribbon plaque and flag. The school received a special commendation from Representative Donald Bruin. Washington alum Jacob Zolke and myself spoke to students about following their dreams, and students saw a special photo story about their mascot's Liberty's trip to DC. The celebration concluded with everyone singing the song "Be Who You Want to Be." Also, all Washington families received a yard sign at conferences, recognizing their elementary school's recognition as a Blue Ribbon School. The Student Council hosted Donuts for Dad on November 17th, where male figures in the kids' lives came before school for a tour and coffee and donuts. And there was a wonderful turnout for the second year in a row. Students went through ACT Care Tell curriculum and signs of suicide at the middle school. On November 9th, there was 28-plus vets honored at their Veterans Day Assembly, and they would like to thank all those in attendance who helped honor and commemorate their visits with them. Several of those in attendance are being interviewed by students and will have their stories published in the Library of Congress. The DC process starts this month, with students picking an influential person within the seventh grade curriculum to research, and on December 18th, students will present their research at the DC Fair in the persona of that person. They hope you can join them for this event, and today is the Student Council Jam Festival. The high school officially hit the quarter mark in the school year, and so far, things are going well. Looking ahead, they are working on a tiered study hall with tutoring coming from the university and NHS. ACT readiness skills practice and close reading strategies are being used school-wide.
All right, thank you, Ally. Thank you.
Before Ally, if I can chime in, before Ally and Jacob leave, Jacob might be here for another presentation. They were fantastic at Washington, so thank you for... You forgot recess.
We need to get a recess report.
Yeah. How did recess go?
It was an adventure.
Thank you. It meant a lot to everybody that you guys came back and shared. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, our public comments. These are non-agenda items. Citizens may speak regarding items not on the agenda under public comments, but no school board action will be taken. Issues raised may become part of a future agenda. Agenda items, citizens may speak regarding specific issues on the agenda at the time the board discusses them. Citizen comment requests should be filled out prior to speaking. Is there anyone here for non-agenda public comments? Seeing none, we move on to special reports and/or action. And first is overnight field trip approval. Laura Maszburk? Maszburk, sorry.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, I'm on the agenda for two trips. Would you like me to do those together or separately? They're one and the same. Together, is that right?
I have to act on them separately, since it's just going already.
Okay. Robotics team is off and running for a second straight year. We currently have 53 members, which is incredible, just a little bit over 9% of the student body. We've received enormous community support. Generac has been amazing again. Whitewater Manufacturing, HSI Rentals, and we've received some national grants as well, which has really helped support the team. So, last year, we attended one regional competition, which was in La Crosse, the Seven Rivers Regional. The kids learned an enormous amount during that trip, but what we discovered was that if you're not competing in two regionals, you are really at a disadvantage. The way the season works, on the first Saturday in January, we find out what we have to build, and then we have six weeks to build it, and then we have to seal it. And we can't open it yet until we get to competition. So, teams that were in two different regionals have the opportunity to open up the robot and work on it for four days, and then seal it again for the second regional. We only attended one regional. We were a little bit behind when we got there, because we were still working our bugs out. So, we are requesting permission to go to the Wisconsin Regional, and the team has been admitted. And that would be from Thursday, March 22nd through Saturday, March 24th. I would be taking a small group of students in Wednesday night to set up, and then we would come home, and the full board, part of the team would go on Thursday morning for Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. So, that is the first trip.
It's now spring break, isn't it?
It is the week before spring break, so we wouldn't miss the Thursday and Friday before break.
I'll make a motion to approve the field trip for approximately 30 to 40 Whitewater High School students to attend the Wisconsin Regional First Robotics Competition in Milwaukee, Wisconsin, March 22nd through the 24th, 2018.
Second.
I have a motion and some seconds. Is there any other discussion? Jody?
Stuart?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Then our second trip is the Second Regional, which is the Seven Rivers Regional in La Crosse, and that is the week after spring break. And because of the distance, we would be leaving school on Wednesday after sixth period, and then again, staying through Saturday. So, Mr. Levinberg and I have talked a little bit about the two trips. We would take the core leadership group, the drive team, and then split the team between the two regionals, so not all of the students would miss school both of those weeks. So, we request that permission to go from April 4th to the 7th.
I'll make a motion to approve the overnight field trip of approximately 30 to 40 Whitewater High School students to attend the Seven Rivers Regional First Robotics Competition in La Crosse, Wisconsin, April 4th through the 7th, 2018.
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
I have just a question. Are there fees that we have to pay, entry fees, with fees?
The team has been fundraising, so the team has those entry fees covered.
And approximately how much?
The First Regional, that includes the kit of parts, is $5,000. The Second Regional is an additional $4,000. And we have actually received, on the agenda tonight, you have the First of a $2,000 grant from Tenter through First, and we got a notice today, we're getting another $2,000 from them. So, that will cover the Second Regional.
Yeah, the only reason I ask, because I know these are very expensive, and people who have come forth and donating money, it's just absolutely fantastic. My only question is, can we sustain this?
I don't know if we can sustain two regionals. We will see what brands are out there again for next year. The community has definitely shown enough support to sustain one.
Yeah, these folks are wonderful to do it, and I just hope we can sustain it.
Anything else? Jody?
Davis?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Stuart?
Yes.
Thank you for your stuff.
Good luck.
Next is the Seventh Grade Field Trip to Washington DC, New York City. Jamie Weigle?
Hello, good evening. So, I'm here tonight to request permission for the overnight trip to Washington DC and to New York City this year. And as you heard from Ally, that process already started. Last Friday, kids were able to come before school and choose their person, and it's actually interesting, they're able at 7:30 to line up, and then at 7:40, they're able to come in. And we had over 50 kids there in the cafeteria by 7:15. It was like Black Friday, they're all waiting to pick their person, which was really exciting. And this year, we actually have 76 currently signed up to do a project. So, that project will, the fair will take place on December 18th. So, hopefully, we'll see all 76 of those students follow through with their projects. The trip this year, we would leave Monday after school on April 16th, and it would run through that week, returning Saturday, April 21st. So, in addition to creating the history project, students have to maintain the average in all classes, maintain good behavior throughout third quarter. And the ties to our curriculum, let me scroll down a little bit. So, a little bit of a change this year, and this change, in case you're wondering, came about, we actually plan the trip ourselves. So, Mr. Stutzman is one who does most of that planning, and we're contacted by salespeople all the time, trying to get us to go with their company, and we continue to do it ourselves because there's a huge amount of cost savings as a result of that. But one of the trips that we're constantly kind of being bugged, we're trying to be sold, is the DC-New York City combo. So, it kind of just got us looking into it, and it really doesn't add any additional cost to our trip, and the connections, because we spent a good portion of second semester studying civil rights movement, history of immigration in the United States, diversity, and the ties with that aspect of our curriculum with Statue of Liberty, Ellis Island, the historical tenement. There's a house that you can tour, but just the district itself, Chinatown. It was a really good fit with our curriculum. And so, by eliminating actually our trip to Mount Vernon, the cost is actually the same as it was last year, so it'll be roughly about $850. It's about a three-hour bus drive from DC to New York City. We would be there one and a half, one full day and a half a day in Washington DC, and you can see that on the itinerary. But other connections to our curriculum, government, you study US government, I'm actually studying that right now. We toured the Capitol Building, Library of Congress, National Archives to see the Constitution, Declaration of Independence, Supreme Court Building, White House. You never know until that year, usually about two weeks before, if you're going to get a tour of the White House or not, but that's always something we hope for. Federal Hall in Washington DC is actually, or in New York City, sorry, is the first site of the first US Congress. For our economics unit, Bureau of Printing and Graving, and also this year, we'd be able to add Wall Street onto that. We study World War I and World War II, so the Holocaust Museum, and then US monuments and memorials in Washington DC. We also are able to bring that aspect of our curriculum to life. So, any questions about the trip? Fundraising opportunities, we've already had our first activity night, or second activity night of the year, but the one that we sponsored, all of that money supplied then, to lower the overall cost of all students. We will have a Culvers Night in the spring. We sell candy canes right before winter break, a 50 cents candy cane, and you can send it to their friends. During the spring, conferences, we have raffle baskets, and students sell tickets for those raffle baskets, writing letters to businesses, asking for donations. And then the last two on there, the Boston Store coupon books and the chocolate candy bar sales, those are fundraisers that students can choose to do on their own, they're not required to. The other ones lower the overall cost of the trip. The other two of those are specifically for them, so whatever money they are motivated to raise, they get to keep to lower their own personal cost of the trip. Last, two years ago, we added Boston Store, it was a very successful fundraiser for us. Last year, we added the candy bars, and those two were very successful, so some students were able to raise quite a bit from those two. We also have some scholarships available, although unfortunately, not as much this year, but the ELL students are able to apply for a grant, or a scholarship through the ELL grant, and students can also request a payment plan through the office, so they don't have to pay it in two lump sums, but they can spread it out over a longer period of time. And that is our trip in a nutshell. Like I said, cost is the same, approximately same. Nothing is guaranteed until we have the contract with the airlines. That's been reserved, but not finalized, as well as the hotel. Those are kind of the two that fluctuate through the year a little bit. But by eliminating Mount Vernon, that compensated for the coach bus to New York.
Move to approve the overnight field trip for approximately 15 Whitewater Middle School Seventh Gradeers for their hanging trip to Washington DC and New York City, April 16th through April 21st.
Second.
Second, is there any other discussion? Jody?
Judd?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Stuart?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
All right, all right.
Thank you. If you're interested, stop by the middle school after school on December 18th and see all 76 projects on this one. Thank you.
All right, next is the Whitewater High School Band Trip to New Orleans. Abby Kading.
I feel like this is deja vu. This trip was proposed back in May, and it was approved. So, I'm back because, back in May, when I took a student interest survey, I had approximately 35 students, which kind of gave me the go-ahead, the motivator for going after the trip, because that was current students from last year, not including seniors, and I knew I had 20 incoming freshmen enrolled. My goal number was to be between 45 and 50, because that's how cost is figured for the trip. So, now that students have had the opportunity to pay, to turn in a commitment form and put their initial deposit down, I'm at 35 instead of 45. And so, the idea came to me to open it up, to invite students from the Fort Atkinson School District, to possibly, their band students to be involved in the trip, knowing that it's a limited number, 10 to 15 students. The max capacity is 50, because that's how the trip has been figured, so cost for students is all the same across the board, which is a $9.50 cost. They've been fundraising and so on and so forth already, working on that, the trip payment. So, this essentially will allow the trip to happen. We're kind of in, just been trying to get creative. You know, I have had, I have nine chaperones, so my adult ratio is great, it's just the difference in the student interest is there. So, the trip is to Memphis in New Orleans. It starts in Memphis, doing the Sun Studios Tour, Gibson Guitar Factory, Graceland, the home of Elvis, and seeing all of those memorabilia. But then, it's an overnight trip, obviously, and we drive down to the city of New Orleans. They get three performance opportunities, which is one of the, one of the things that I value most about the trip. They get to play at a nursing home, in small chamber groups, and in large ensembles, and the audience, the clientele of the nursing home just adores it. Have the chance to perform in Jackson Square, the heart of the French Quarter on the streets, for over 1,000 people. You never know who's going to be walking by and hearing your sounds, which is really quite precious. And then, we're working on an exchange concert with another high school, where we'll get to play for them, and the high, those high school students will play for us, and we'll kind of clinic and go back and forth and have some collaborative opportunities. So, the whole trip is kind of a collaborative experience and an educational experience. And so, hoping to allow, my husband conveniently, conveniently, conveniently teaches in Fort Atkinson, will also already be on the trip, and it seems like a good solution to a potential problem, so.
Do we really need to approve this?
Will we ask the Fort Atkinson School Board to join us?
Right, for us, there is not a difference, is there?
But I think it's important. But Fort Atkinson's, the difference is that Ford's coming along. Whether you feel that way, that's okay. Reason we brought Ford is because we're...
I understand that, and I'm just wondering, our students are okay, we have to just think of Fort Atkinson students, and would they have the board there approving you have to join us?
Well, I think they have to do that.
Do we need an approval to say we'll accept them?
I think, I think we should.
Okay.
Their administration gives the, they have that.
Move to accept us, students from Fort Atkinson. With instructor. We wouldn't want to leave him out.
No, right.
Appreciate it. You will have Fort Atkinson chaperones then also?
Um, they're, so, my husband is a teacher there, and they're, right now, it's open to students. Their policy or their ratio is still within the student count, so they're only looking for one adult from Fort Atkinson. We have, still in addition, have eight more adults. So, I have not opened it up for other chaperones, but it was going to basically be a first-come, first-served, the first 10 to 15 people interested in the trip. So, if there are chaperones and adult interest from Fort Atkinson...
You have one for sure. I guess my recommendation, having taken student trips halfway across the world...
Yeah.
I would suggest you have at least two from Fort Atkinson, because there's a dynamic of how your kids and their kids get along, and you will need an adult to understand their kids, a couple of them, so just a suggestion.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. Thank you. Absolutely.
So, the motion is to approve the overnight field trip for approximately 40 Whitewater High School students to Memphis in June, March 23rd through the 29th, along with a number of Fort Atkinson students.
Correct.
Is that...
That's correct.
Any other discussion? Jody?
McCray?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Stuart?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Thank you. Can't wait to share all the photos and stories when I'm back.
All right, next, lessons learned from the August 23 training.
Well, and I may jump into Jody's seat, depending on the answer to your, to answer to my question. I could talk about this a long time. I came to you back in July, we talked about the planning that was going in to the August 23rd, full-scale. We've put together, I put together about a 30 to 40-minute presentation that I am doing with each of the schools, so that all district staff are informed. I am more than willing to go through that whole thing with you, I'm more than willing to talk, you got a long agenda. So, I'll give you a little bit, then I'm definitely going to sit down, if that's okay, and I can click through pretty quick. Some of the things, we ended up with about 75 district employees and about 75 law enforcement officers there. So, we had quite a group of people that showed up. We had help from all kinds of area entities, and I can't say enough about our local PD and the Sheriff's Department and Wisconsin Emergency Management, everybody, they were just awesome. We went to, you know, our goal was to prepare for the worst. You see some of the pictures from the event that day. And, you know, the ongoing goal that we shared with all participants is in an actual emergency, we want to be able to tell people that this is going really slow, but everything is done for a purpose, and, you know, the best interest of students and staff are in mind. I will take you through kind of exactly what we did that day, so you're aware. This was the high school grounds on that day, the areas that we had closed off, we had it barricaded here, here, and here, participants only in this area. The red area was kind of the live area where law enforcement was staged. The staging area was here, all law enforcement and EMTs basically entered through these back doors here. The area in play was the first floor only in that square, and within that, a little bit more specifically, doors 25 and 26 were the only ways in and out. We shut off the second floor, we shut off these two doors, lots because there was construction and also because, just for the scope of this training and the number of people, we needed a little smaller area. We had rooms 101 and 105 where we planned for victims. We wanted people to be able to, we needed people for the warm extraction to, we needed to have injured for that process to be practiced. So, we did have that area there. 141, 135 was the simulated office, again, we didn't have access to the office. 131, 132, 107, 165, so this room, this room, this room, and this room. We put district employees, one as a teacher, multiple as students in those classrooms, and asked them to respond as they would in an actual emergency, the way that we have trained as a district to run hide-and-fight. We had 149, we had observers, if we watched all the video, which I can or can't, you know, we don't have to show it, that's where the observers mainly were. There were some in the hallways as well. And then, we did have a room 136, which we called, I called it the lowest-stress room, people who did not want to be physically engaged, but wanted to be there and learn from it. So, they hung out in this area, and they did end up being escorted out by police as well, but it was pretty, pretty low-key. We had a single gunman, started with an argument in a classroom, and basically, the gunman started in this area, with some shots fired here, came into this hallway, shots fired down this hallway where he encountered a victim. He took a peek at these two rooms to see if he could see anybody, and then he walked down the hall. Again, we had staged victims here, looked in these rooms to see if anyone was there, came around, looking for people, looking for targets throughout the building. And the plan was for him to encounter law enforcement somewhere in this with Officer Hints showing up. The timing was off, and things don't always work as we planned, so he actually came all the way back around to here, and then went back around again, and was encountered at about here by Officer Hints and went down. Shortly after Officer Hints got to him, the first law enforcement started to arrive, they started securing the building, they started, you know, looking and prioritizing who they needed to get out first, and started caring for people and getting more people into the building. So, that was kind of what happened. It was simulated. Everybody that was on grounds was there, there was no people flying in with cop cars going fast and lights on or anything. Everybody that was there, that was there. There was lots of safety precautions taken to make sure that everybody was triple-checked before going in. All the invisible people had their vests on. Again, I don't know if you, what you want to see, or if you have access to this, I'd be happy to share it with you. You can come to one of the other schools. This is a video from the Axon camera, the body camera, of the gunman and his path through the building until the first announcement. You have a yay or a nay on if you'd like to see that, or...
Sure.
Okay. So, I apologize if there's language. Is that okay? Because we ask people to be authentic, so this is as authentic as we can make it.
Where the fuck is the principal? I want to fucking talk to him right now! Fucking stick to it! I'm not putting the gun down until I talk to the fucking principal!
I said, I'm sorry.
Where is he? Where is he? I'm gone, I'm gone!
It's like, give it over here.
I fucked everybody in this fucking building! Fuck this place!
So, you can see a lot of people in the vest. He's checking these two rooms. You heard him at the first room, you did see people still in that, that room. You heard him at the first room, you did see people still in that, that room. At that point in time, like I said, he's gonna make the path all the way around, he's gonna come all the way back around. One of the big lessons learned is, one, you could not hear those gunshots or him yelling anywhere outside of that main hallway that he was in. So, um, Officer Hints started up by the art room, came all the way down to the office area and entered, and he did not hear anything until he opened the door into that wing. So, that's how little, uh, the sound carried. It was about a minute and fifty seconds before the first all-call came over. So, a lot can happen in a minute and fifty seconds. So, we know, as a district, we know we need to get faster, and that's been a big part of the message. We have to communicate out what's going on there. Um, Officer Hints did, um, make it down, he started in the art room. He makes an entrance, um, into the, the hallway, basically from that doorway. Um, is, is obviously shooting blanks, but takes out the, the victim, or the shooter at that point in time. Um, it was, the all-call came seconds after the first radio call, which means people called nine-one-one first, which is good, that nine-one-one was activated that fast. Um, but we also need to make sure that we're activating, um, the, the school staff that doesn't hear exactly what's going on in that area. Um, so it started a little different, uh, than we had, we had thought it would. Um, Officer Hints, I don't know if you read in the paper, he got to that door, he didn't expect it to be, uh, locked. Um, and he was able to get through it. When he did start using his weapon, they don't always function well with blanks. It misfired, so he got three shots off, and then it misfired. So, he had to figure out things as he went as well. Um, so, some of the lessons learned from the gunman's perspective. Um, it was interesting, we sat down, watched the video, talked through what he saw. Um, he, he felt like he had an awful lot of time to just wander free in a building. Um, and that's kind of a scary thought, he felt like he owned the school. Um, and I think what we, what he and I talked about is, he knew exactly kind of the hallway that he was supposed to encounter Jake. That was all he really knew. He didn't know when it would happen, but he knew about, outside of that, um, you know, he felt like he was invincible, just walking through the halls. Which, when we do prepare for the run hide-fight, we are preparing that element of surprise to tact, to tactically overcome somebody, which tells us that even in this, you know, type of environment, their mind's not on that, and, and there is a chance that we could, you know, real good chance that we could overtake somebody, 'cause they're not looking for anybody to actually show resistance. Um, he, uh, yeah, like I said, he could've covered a lot of area, um, if, if he had wanted to. He did see, um, he did see some people in that first classroom. Um, other than that, he did not see any other people. So, people were able to close rooms very quickly based on the noise they heard, which is good that they weren't waiting for the all-call. You know, they, they responded that way. Um, we practiced our, uh, response, w- w- all four classrooms, first reaction was to hide. The fourth classroom, the furthest one away and the closest to the exit, um, did decide to exit once things quieted down, um, and they took off and went running out of the building, um, after it, Officer Hints had actually encountered, um, the shooter and got out of the building. Um, we did practice a brand-new, uh, communication piece, which, um, that is accounting for people in a non-structured evacuation of a building, and that's something that we're sharing through this lesson learned presentation, to make sure everybody has, um, basically, an accountability system to call into central office to let them know that you're okay, um, after, uh, you've evacuated a building. So, that's been, uh, a good thing. So, that's the new procedure that was introduced. Um, I think this is worth sharing. Um, we asked for a number of emails, or asked for people's opinions and thoughts after they had a chance to decompress. Um, this was a good, a, a good comment in my mind, they were all positive that came in. Um, honored to teach in a district where it's such an important emphasis on school safety. Um, we learned, um, a lot, the, the, the trying to talk them down in that first room. It was beyond that at that point in time. Um, we know that we gotta get invisible faster if we're gonna hide that first room. Um, it, there may have been shots fired into that room because they could see in and see that there were people in there. Um, the rooms that were silent and dark was very effective. The interior rooms in that building, when you shut the lights off, you can't see a thing, and that was very much to our advantage at that point in time. On a second walk-through, uh, even cellphone lights were showing up, and that happened to be from the notes of the controller, the controller taking notes. I think you just saw me writing, you know, that, that type of thing, but the rest of the class, the rest of the group was concealed. And obviously, we wanna make that response time quicker. Sharing a video, and I won't share this now, that basically explains the psychology of you wait for somebody else to take the first steps, and we have to get past that, um, and be ready to take those first steps on our own. Um, and, uh, I think that's a i- important thing. And then, we're talking through those, those stages of disaster response. Any time that we spent frozen in those moments is bad news. So, the more that we've thought about it, the more that we've talked about it, the more we're prepared for it, the faster our response can be. So, we go through denial, deliberation, talk about the heart rate, and this has been talked about in our other trainings, uh, but another just reminder of how, when your heart rate raises, you know, what's happening to your body and your functioning. Um, and, and that's good stuff for people to understand. So, we need to calm ourselves and use combat breathing and shift that emotional mindset, those types of things. Um, and then be ready to take the decisive action and, and move very quickly. Um, that is Officer Hints, obviously, and the gunman and the first officer to the scene out, from outside of the building. Um, as a law enforcement, I, it, this was a great experience for law enforcement as well. One of the biggest things that they learned, um, they learned a number of things. Um, but they, uh, they saw what we are gonna do in an options-based response when it's a little bit unpredictable. They, um, they were able to practice working together with EMT and fire, and that was a positive thing for them, that's something they don't train on very well, but they will be increasing their training on. And I truly feel, the conversations we've had, we've made our entire community safer because that collaboration was kind of forced for this. Um, and they know that that's gonna be, you know, an annual training and a more regular training as a community. So, that's a, that's a real positive out of that. Um, the professionalism of the law enforcement was outstanding, uh, another participant's comments on that. Um, you can see the warm zone extraction that they practiced, has an officer in front, officer in back, two EMTs, and they are in vests, uh, some as protected as they can be. Warm zone means that they can't truly say that this is safe, so that everybody can just walk around freely, so they're still protecting that area and anticipating something else, but yet they know they need to go, get in there to deliver first aid care. Um, so again, those lessons learned, we need those more regular trainings. Um, some of the officers checking the building. Again, when you have the ability to have the four officers, these four officers are moving together. One's got the back, you know, the sides and, and moving through. Um, EMT, again, the communication, 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 it's all getting those, those things to happen through that, uh, process. Um, the alert-warm extraction needs to be an annual training. That relationship, w- working with law enforcement needs to be worked on. And then, they see opportunities for something that we've been asking for, um, but to make sure that our district staff is as trained as we can be, um, for some future casualty care type, type things. Um, that includes the use of tourniquets, um, and, and those types of things. Uh, this is one of the, one of the victims being carried out. Um, and they used a lot of the TARP-type, uh, moves, or, uh, tools during the warm extraction to move people out as quickly as possible. Um, so, again, stressing to people, the key to this is relationships. This is a, not a fun thing to talk about, but if we're building relationships, building connections with our kids and our families, um, we can hopefully prevent this from ever happening. Um, and, uh, that's, that's the important part that we wanna continue to, to stress with SAF. Um, the prevention, following protocol, being aware of the power of technology. Um, lots of stuff to review there. The importance of not waiting to be told, again, is a review. We have to be able to get on those louds, loudspeakers right away and let people know that this is going on. The importance of programming cellphones, so that you have access to be able to communicate, um, you know, out, throughout this. We just then reviewed hold dock, alert, deny. For the people who weren't there, what are our options that we train for in our district? And important, I think, for you guys to know, a- at the end of every one of these, even this, where you've watched a video, and I saw Ally's eyes get about this big over there. I- if this is bothering you, if this is bothering anybody, there are people you can talk to and reminding them to come back and, uh, come and see your administrator, see the member of the People Service Team, I can't get this out of my head, I can't stop thinking about it, uh, to make sure that you're feeling comfortable about that, because your mental health is incredibly in- important. So, then we ask for questions, and, and thank you. So, that's kind of the, the, the presentation, the recap of it, in a, in a fast version. Um, from these conversations, and the conversation that we had with law enforcement after this, you know, it, it's the next step, and we know that we want to, uh, we, we know that we wanna continue to look at student training. Um, you know, if we look at a middle school or high school, uh, the chance of this happening when everybody is neatly in their classrooms with attendance taken, um, you know, you know, no, it might happen in a different environment, um, or it's more likely to happen at Walmart or, or someplace else, you know? Uh, so, we wanna teach the, the students these skills as well, um, of how they can protect themselves and how they can be safe in a, in a not-so-good environment. Um, so, we're working on those trainings and working with, uh, Mike and, and Mojo and local law enforcement to see what we can, what we can get to the, the kids here to make sure they're prepared. And then we will take that version, again, like we did back in two thousand fourteen, all the way to the elementary level, in a very different format, you know, um, at, at every level. So, tiering that down so that it's age-appropriate for every grade level, but yet having the tough conversations to make sure that our schools are safe. So, that's kind of what we've been working on, any questions?
Do you give parents a heads-up, like?
We will, before we train, yeah, absolutely. That's on our, it was first on our list, and we did, in two thousand fourteen, when we did those trainings, um, we sent, um, we sent parent letters home. We invited parents in to PTA meetings or PTO meetings, where we would basically share what we would be sharing, um, ask them to call if they had questions, gave them the opt-out permit, you know, those types of things. Um, we, we intend on doing all of that. The opt-out's a little bit nerf, you know, a little bit, it's hard to do, because, I, I mean, the reality of in the world we live in, um, this is, this is as important as fire and tornado and, and those types of drills as well, just to know that we, that we know that we can get kids to respond and staff to respond the way that we need to respond. So, that's, those are all conversations that we'll have, and I'll make sure, before we do those, that you guys are included, at least through Mark's notes. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, the strategic planning timeline. Kelly?
Jody, I may be jumping around on a couple slides. You will recall that our strategic plan for the school district is sunsetting, so it's time to revisit and revision and, and think going forward on what our strategic plan is gonna look like. Do you want me to take the clicker, would that be helpful? All right. Um, an organization can have a strong strategic plan and not be a strong organization. All strong organizations have strong strategic plans, so they're not contingent upon each other. It's our intention to have a strong strategic plan and to have a strong organization that feeds off the strategic plan. Um, a lot of people, a lot of organizations put time and energy into building a really big strategic plan, and then they're so exhausted from creating this behemoth, that they put it on the shelf, they wipe their brow, and they go on about their business. Um, we know, from our discussions, preliminary discussions, that our heavy lifting is gonna come when the plan is done, and we're working on implementing all of the, um, the plans that come from the, the points that we're making up. Jody, this is fascinating. Okay, Ron White? All right. These are the initial people that have, uh, agreed to be on the Strategic Planning Committee. Um, if you look at those names, most of them were not here five years ago when we created our previous strategic plan. So, in our discussions, when we started talking about vision, mission, and core values, a couple of these newbies had said that when they were researching our district for our culture and our climate and, and our definition of who we are, they looked at our strategic plan, and a cou- a couple of them, in our, our discussion a couple weeks ago, said, "I read your strategic plan, and it was kind of meh." And I thought, "Oh, that, I hope that doesn't define us for any other candidates that want to, uh, come and apply for us, uh, in our, in our district." So, uh, because so many of these faces are new, we are going to be revisiting, is the vision that we have, the vision that we want, are we doing what we're supposed to be doing? Does the mission that we use to define how we are still define what we wanna be doing? And how about our core values? Um, I'm gonna jump ahead and remind you of what our vision, mission, and core values are. Um, these are the strategic priorities. If I have a light here? I do. The strategic priorities, uh, we determined five of them, and from those, we came up with objectives within each of those priorities. Uh, we're gonna talk a little bit more about that in a little bit. When we do all of our surveys of stakeholders and get the information that we need from our community, from our staff, and from our students, to determine what our priorities should be, we may have five priorities, we may have three. Um, preliminary talks and, and early meetings have been, if we don't need five, let's be as clear and concise as we can, let's keep it as simple as we can. So, when we determine each of our priorities, how many ever there might be, within each priority, we're gonna determine objectives that support those priorities. And we did that last time, that, that's not new to us. The piece that we didn't do previously, that we will be doing this time, are the action plans that support each of these objectives, that are based on each of the priorities that we determine, based on feedback from stakeholders. We kind of let this piece, um, get messy with the previous plan, and, um, moving forward, we will have priorities, objectives within each priority, and plans to help support each of those objectives of those priorities. Okay. We've already had some, uh, preliminary discussions, we met in October, and that's when that group established, um, who wanted to be part of this, who felt passionate about it, who was interested in, in moving forward with this. And we got some real movers and shakers, I'm excited about the, the people that want to be on this committee. There are people that are creative and yet very much go-getters. Not a lot of circling the rabbit hole and, and losing time on stuff that, um, we may or may not drive our discussions forward. There's some, some good people on the team that will work hard to get that job done. We met on eleven-three, November third, um, and talked about our preliminary wants and needs and set up a timeline that I'm sharing with you tonight. And then, part of that timeline is me being here with you tonight. Being as clear and concise. December seventh, the committee is gonna be meeting again, uh, a day that will go down in infamy. Uh, we will revisit the former mission, mission, core values, priorities, and action steps. Are they still relevant? Um, how do we feel about them? We'll be talking about, um, how do we know if these are working? If we're doing what we should be doing with them? What evidence do we have that our vision, mission, core values, and priorities are being effective? Uh, we'll discuss a timeline for moving forward for the rest of the year, and I'll share that with you tonight. Uh, agenda for our stakeholder community forum, eh, just after the school year, we're gonna be sharing this with community stakeholders, parents, um, community members that show up, and we'll share with them our data, data based on, um, student achievement, based on parent involvement, student engagement, um, all of that information. And then we will ask them to take a survey that night, that will help guide our decision-making around those priorities. The data sources, and then we'll talk about who does what when in this whole process. We're gonna meet in January and run this process by our Curriculum Planning Council and esteemed group of professionals, that, um, collective brainpower is impressive. This is a really great group of people. Um, we will run all of this by our CPC, and we will also ask those teachers to take our survey. In January, we will have that community stakeholder meeting, probably after dinner sometime, and gather that information on our prod, our strategic planning process. We'll share district data, we will conduct that survey in January, and we will also- We'll share district data, we will conduct that survey in January, and we will also survey students in February. Once we have all of that information, in March, we'll meet again. We will talk about that survey results. We will cluster those results into priorities and then we will develop priorities, objectives, and plans based on that feedback from our community stakeholders. Just like Alice asked the Cheshire Cat, "If you don't know where you're going, any road will get there." We've got a lot of heavy lifting to do, we've got some important work to do. This is the road that will get us there. Questions for me? Mark will be touching base with you to see who on the board is interested in sitting in on some of these meetings and being part of this amazing process because we want your thumbprint on it. It actually ultimately has your name on it. If you do have questions, you know where to find me. Thank you.
So recommended action is motion to approve the employment of, I apologize, Genovita Redusco, 5.5 hours per day, health aide, district-wide, effective November 13th, 2017. And Storm Langhaw, 35 hours per week, custodian of one high school, effective November 14th, 2017.
I'll make a motion, the board approved personnel report as presented.
Second. Motion of the second, is there any discussion? Jody?
Ryan?
Yes.
Stuart?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
All right, next is the district administrator report.
A couple thank yous for donations less than $1,000. $200 donation from the Kiwanis Breakfast Club, items for needy students at Lincoln Elementary. $500 donation from First Citizens St. Bake to the Family Emergency Fund. And then a $50 donation from William F. Sido to the High School Auto Shop.
Sido?
Thank you. Wanted to report that we received our OCR letters saying that the work on the complaint, the EDA website accessibility complaint, has been completed. We'll send out a press release. Thank you again to Andy. He led his team and continues to work to update the website. Talking to some of my peers, I saw Suck Prairie just finished theirs. I know another peer, they're still clearing some hurdles, so we're glad to have that finished reminder. And thank you to the banner for posting and reminding our community about having a board vacancy opening. People interested should respond or give a letter of interest prior to 4:00 PM on December 7th. The board meeting is December 11th at 6 o'clock. As mentioned before, school report cards will be out tomorrow. Great Adams Family Show. Blue Ribbon Schools, as you heard earlier, that Washington intends to celebrate all year. Lifetouch will be stopping by, giving a couple banners to Washington tomorrow at 11:00. Also, something that's in the works for Martin Luther King Day on January 15th, community members and district administrators at the middle school and high school have been doing the planning. That will be a Peace Circle-like event. More information to come. One of the things I heard out in Washington is we heard the National Teacher of the Year and it's really exciting to be part of a district that, you heard it earlier today, the relationships, the relevance, and the equity, three big drivers and I think Whitewater really embodies that. Also attached, and I'm just going to start at seven, you've heard and seen many of these celebrations, but we have the annual report. We'll have this ready probably about August of next year as we prepare for an operational referendum. Of course, we'll be talking about that a lot more in the upcoming meetings. But we have participants of National History Day. They're no longer called the Tommy Awards, they're the question mark awards, but we have many, many people recognized for outstanding work. Tony Chow just, again, he was in front of the board last year. I think it's really exciting, David's gone, but if you're out at Lakeview, visit the steam room, that's going to be renovated with referendum dollars, but they've already started to put that space to use. I see Sarah Brunn again there a lot. We have a student win Operation Click. You heard about robotics. It is huge. I do believe that, you know, if you have a successful high school that meets, you know, the interests and challenges students, you're a school that has robotics. So I'm glad we have one. Paul Majors continues to do outstanding things. Those are the recognitions on page 11, talks about our achievement. Now testing's not everything, but there are benchmarks. You heard Mike Lovenberg, our principal at the high school, talk earlier this year with his building goals. We would like to be better. We're upfront and honest with that and I think they're working really hard. But importantly, as I mentioned before, not only is academics important, but then the relationships behind that. As we talked about, Kelly just touched on the strategic plan and then we highlight all of the areas, curriculum, Jedi Virtual, summer school, technology, and then, you know, all of our other buildings, highlighting the successes of last year. So wonderful, wonderful document that really does a good job summarizing what we did last year and we look forward to putting together another component. This sheet, since we are doing referendum updates, we did at the end. You've heard all these updates previously, but we have, you know, information for the community to refer to.
Thank you.
All right, next is the Capitol referendum.
So aid, again, talked about it a little bit in the annual report and just that we continue to update, continue to update the information with the October on our webpage. Construction progress update. So what's going on right now from the outside, probably doesn't look like a lot's going on. The last couple of weeks, we've had a roof put on in both of our new facilities. And Jody, if you click on the site visit, if you look this way, you've got the new wing. You'll see a picture from today to show kind of the difference, but the, go ahead and click. Work on the courtyard, again, you'll see an update. All the pavers are in, they've got most of the walkways and they're starting to put the mulch in also. So pergo's about to go in. Roof was going in at the Lincoln Gym. It wasn't standalone at this point in time, as you can see the supports. And then the fitness room.
In terms of the Lincoln construction, it is incredibly loud in some of those interior classrooms, like we have got teachers with microphones and other things. Is that going to sort of stop with the weather gets cold?
It's, we're getting better now.
Okay, awesome. I mean, everyone's doing a fantastic job of juggling and we're all being agile and it's all lovely, but it's something. I'd say, yeah.
And then this is, you'll see pictures from today and a little progress in the next slideshow. This is the hallway extending out the exit. So took a quick tour today and what a difference 12 days makes. So this is the high school, you've got the roof in. It's at the highest point. The weight room, this is from the weight room side, those will be windows going out. You can see on the far end, that would be an exit from the team meeting room. What you don't see is, you can see where the tractor is. There's an equally large door there going into the auxiliary gym. They're getting prepared to punch that out, but there will be an entrance at that point. Go ahead and click. You, on the first slide of the first PowerPoint, you saw things. They have the steel more tied together, you can see the brick. Initially, when I saw the Lincoln Gym, wondered who in the world, that would be me, picked those colors, it blends better now with the existing brick. This is from inside the Lincoln Gym. They've done, they're getting ready to pour. I do not believe they poured it this time, but they've got a tarp over the base at this point in time. And that's what we have. In terms of product, project changes, these are the two change orders. And so right now, it's been more labor than anything. These are things that have been basically rectifying most of, Matt, would you say, probably late August, early September. Project timeline remains the same. Contingency dollars, this is updated. So currently, this, as of change order number 10, our contingency is 142, 123. The Cullen contingency is 1.321, 588. Next level projects, we'll be meeting with district leadership teams, so this will be an update for you next, next time. We haven't made any adjustments, so maintain it. And the budget, Matt, do you want to just kind of highlight this? This is the document you use to manage our project.
So JP Cullen keeps one separate set of books, I keep another, we compare periodically to make sure we're on the same page. So this is my format, so it's a little bit different than Cullen's. I break it out in a little bit more detail so you can see every, essentially every specific change that we've made. And it's broken down into two components. The top part is what we're paying Cullen, so that's everything that blew a screen color. And then down below, our owner costs or everything that we're covering.
Can you go back to the top of it? Saw something in there, the skylight somewhere. I don't know where it is. It was a minus or...
There, number six.
Number six, the hot skylight.
Yep.
What are those dollars?
They...
I thought, I'm sorry, I thought the skylight was not part of the referendum.
Correct. It was bid though, as a part of the project.
Yep.
And it keeps showing up and it's not a part of the referendum.
Right.
He's trying to explain that, like your, the nice presentation that you have, the brochure you just showed us, the skylight is right dab in the middle, referendum, referendum, and there's the skylight. So to say that it was bid out in the referendum, but it's not a referendum item, becomes kind of a...
Well, I can edit that out, we have it printed, so we can...
I know, but just a thought.
Oh, no, thank you.
And I see it there and that keeps bringing it up.
But you would never know unless you asked, if you just looked at this.
If you looked at this, you'd think it's part of it.
Right.
We made that.
It's not a big deal, but it's...
Thank you.
And we are on track, like timeline, like...
Yeah.
It's fantastic.
So, you know, in a nutshell, in the update, so the middle school right now, we just, we'll be moving the fitness room equipment over Thanksgiving break and then they'll start the renovations on the art room. So that's going to allow us, you heard before, the pull-forward concept. So yes, we'll have a lot more options, it'll give us some flexibility in the spring, but we continue to hit timelines. Tomorrow, what we've asked Cullen to tell us is what areas, specifically the high school, do they need to work on or, and then we're designating those and then we're planning, you know, then we'll say, well, no, that doesn't work for us because we need this room. Example, they asked us, "Your new weight room, could we use that for storage this summer?" And my question is, "Well, we're renovating the old one this summer." No, we need it. Okay, we understand. But right now, we're kind of just framing out what needs to be done and then we'll be working with DLT. In terms of a curve, if I'm looking this way, you know, everybody feels like they're just starting to see stuff. If you went over to the middle school, they finally feel like they're seeing some progress inside and put, you know, speaking, not necessarily for them, but we will be meeting with them tomorrow, we check in with them. Everybody feels like, oh, we're ramping up planning. I'm on the other side.
Right.
And so, but, I mean, it's a good question, Kelly, but right now, we're verifying, confirming, and then if there's something like, oh, we, like for example, the Lincoln Gym, we're agreeing on where the bases go and that, you know, that's it. We're, you know, we're all set with lines. We've talked to FIA teacher, athletic director, do these lines fit? Is this good for instruction? Boom, and so we'll be ready to go.
Great.
So, you know, and sometimes big projects, like we were worried about punching the wall through the aquatic center and to them, oh yeah, that'll just take a day and a half, we'll be fine.
What was that spitting about?
We'll learn tomorrow. Oh, no, absolutely.
Somebody asked me already, so...
Yeah, and we've been coordinating. I had a meeting earlier, let's see, after the Blue Ribbon Ceremony with the city, we kind of did a walkthrough a little bit and they're also working on some cleaning. We'll get that confirmed. We'll probably have a better answer mid-December, but we're coordinating with the city to make sure, we need the site as much as everybody else does, so.
So it could be happen over the winter sometimes, what you're saying?
I couldn't speculate right now. Yep.
Somebody just asked because they were...
Well, no, it can't because we need to, we need to use the locker room. So that part won't work for us unless I'll know more tomorrow.
Can you look at the next level projects? I had a question on that when I was looking at it. It had to do, oh shoot, I just missed it. It had to do with, shoot, what happened? It had to do with the items that we had suggested, the PR, I think it is, or something.
Priority, PR for priority. Yep.
Why did I include that? Oh, you got it, all right. Don't dig away. There's something that you had mentioned, I don't know where, in an update somewhere, about the baseball and the fields and the softball and fields, something about leakage and that we were doing something about adding it as a project or something. And I'm wondering, when do we make those decisions about adding stuff?
Well, the next level project...
Who's making it?
Oh, yeah. No, good question. So these, nothing, I'm looking carefully, there's some, so first, with that one, first and foremost, that's something that people have said is important. We would bring that forward and I can talk a little bit more about that. That was part of my meeting. So for example, as we've talked and worked with groups, that's a reoccurring theme. Our question has been, what does it mean? There's been four studies in the past 10 years, no study has the same answer. We've had JP Cullen and part of our agreement with JP Cullen is that they would give us a suggestion on how to proceed. We have been asking them for the last three to four months how to proceed and their recommendation, they don't have one right now and we may see it tomorrow. So right now, if we're looking at these, you know, for example, that, these are things that people have talked about, I would say, you know, that is a huge change. That would be something that would be discussed and talked with the board, absolutely.
And just a question on that part. Projects below have been completed or determined not within the scope of the referendum. Who's determining what's not in the referendum?
Core teams, core team and district leadership.
Who, core team?
Core team.
And...
For example, like relocating dumpster enclosure, that was suggested if we were going to have a different type of driveway. We don't have the driveway, we're not changing the driveway on the north side, so it's exed out.
All right, look at the radios, they're somewhere in this $350,000. Cameras and technology, to support safety. That was added in, or is that...
That was, that was part of, that was something, this goes all the way back to last February. This was bid, this was part of, we had put that part of the budget for... This was bid, this was part of, uh, we had put that part of the budget for, um, June second.
But it's going to be included?
Correct.
Okay. Cause at one time, I remember when we were talking way long time ago, and we asked about cameras and we, we said, no, we probably won't be having cameras. I don't know why that was said way back when, but now it's here, and that's good.
Sure.
So the core team and the DLT is making the decision whether or not to include or not include.
Mm-hmm.
And we're being informed afterwards. That it's been included and not included.
We've been talking about this since February.
Okay, go back to the, uh, have we been talking about the baseball field since February?
No, that came back up this fall.
Okay. And it was never talked about way back in the referendum days. We never talked about...
I would say that, that there were conversations prior to my arrival, but leading up to my arrival, there, there were...
I, I don't remember as average going out to town hall or saying, anyway, we, we're looking at our fields. And now we're gonna put three hundred and fifty thousand dollars maybe into it.
Well, again, that, that would come to the board for that.
And what, what determines what comes to the board and what doesn't?
Well, that's a major change. To your point, it wasn't money, and it wasn't discussed. It's something new and different.
And we could decide that, uh, it shouldn't, it falls within the scope of the referendum?
Well, they're, right now, if you talk to the athletic department, they would suggest that there's a safety issue. We can't play games.
I, I, I understand all that. I'm just saying that we determine that is the priority. And, uh, it wasn't talked about in the referendum, but we're gonna do it.
No, we haven't just...
That's kind of thought I'm thinking, that's all.
Well, again, this is preliminary, on, on the white part.
I understand.
Yep. And so that, nothing has, you know...
It hasn't happened, but it could happen.
That's, that's, that would...
You're saying we might have that authority as a board to say that we've never talked about this in the referendum, but we're gonna do it. And see, that, that's...
Yeah.
It's just a transparency thing. That's all.
Well, and I don't disagree, and we also have other revenues that we could do it. Right now, this is, this is more of a, what people think would take us to the next level.
And nothing wrong with that, except the thing that threw me was scope of the referendum, and I don't remember that being scope of the referendum. And if it eliminates some things, why doesn't it eliminate that? And you're saying it'll come to the board, we'll decide. All right. Thank you.
Well, we're definitely gonna get cameras and technology, support safety.
Yeah.
Cause I, I didn't remember that. So where are you seeing that?
That's a dumb...
In the gray?
In the gray.
That's in the gray.
It's just a protocol that's been completed. What, that wasn't, it's not completed.
Well, within the, well, that's misplaced, I apologize.
That looks like we're gonna do a lot of those things, actually.
Yeah, I was surprised that that was not, cause I don't remember it. Cause I remember it was not effective.
One point was too, I'm sorry.
David's gone. But I think David mentioned that. But it wasn't. Now it is. Okay. Forget it.
Well, I'll, I'll update that.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Sorry, how do you keep track of that?
Very good.
I am good. Thank you.
Matt, take it away. Seems like one short month ago, we were talking about the seventeen eighteen budget. It's already time to start talking about the eighteen nineteen budget. So in your board packet, you have a twenty eighteen nineteen fiscal year budget assumptions draft document, as well as a budget process calendar for the twenty eighteen nineteen budget development process. Um, these are both in draft format. I'll just be presenting them tonight, and then it will be slated for approval in December. So you have time to digest it, um, ask any questions, clarifications by next month. So to start out, here's our draft, uh, twenty eighteen nineteen budget calendar. So we are at the top, November, where you're hearing a presentation of the preliminary budget assumptions. Like I mentioned, next month, we'll be approving them. March and April will be the time for the twenty eighteen nineteen staffing plan. And then come July, August, October, uh, is really when we get into the meats and the potatoes of the budget and approving it. So like I mentioned, there's a, there's a document in board docs with all of the budget assumptions. These are just a few of the highlights. We are for twenty eighteen nineteen, right now, assuming that, um, every cohort, so every grade will roll forward. Right now, we have a class of a hundred and fifty-four for seniors, so that will be dropping off. And we'll be assuming a class of a hundred and thirty coming in for kindergarteners. So that would be a net loss of twenty-four students. That is triggering a hold harmless and declining enrollment exemption for our revenue limit purposes. So we're actually projecting a increase in our revenue limit authority. However, we're, we are assuming there is no per pupil revenue limit increase, which there hasn't been for a long time. We're also further assuming that property values will remain stable. We will be seeing a decrease in equalization aid of probably about three hundred thousand. On the flip side, we'll be recognizing two hundred and four dollars more per, uh, per member, per pupil in state aid. We'll also be looking at restoring the Fund Forty-One levy, which was not instituted this year. Uh, we will also contemplate using a line of credit for short-term borrowing purposes instead of a more traditional approach. So with that, we only borrow what we, what we need, not the full two million. And we also strive for a competitive help and dental renewal. So this topic A under my section, is there any discussion on those points or not?
Is that, the last thing you mentioned, is that the major change in all these assumptions? When you were talking about, uh...
Line of credit's probably the major change.
Line of credit, yeah. Yeah. Is that the major change?
That'd be a, a big change, yeah. So right now, we typically just borrow two million per year.
Is that something we bid out, like we do with the short-term borrowing, same thing?
Yeah.
There's a lot of FICO forms.
What's that?
There's a lot of forms.
Yeah.
But it's, it, you're spot on in terms of it just provides you with flexibility, uses it to compete.
Right. Okay.
We couldn't, there was, we, we thought about suggesting it this year, but based on the amount with referendum dollars, then it wouldn't have been as conducive for the lenders. And so next year would be an opportunity for us.
Is this something we've not been able to do in the past?
It's an emerging practice.
I mean, it seems like almost a no brainer to me now, but I don't ever remember seeing it.
When rates were higher, if you go back, it's so...
Oh, okay. It's a rate thing?
It's, it's rate related. I mean, and so it depends on, is it, does it work for you? Does it work against you? Um, I was approached, my prior, former employer by a local banker. We started doing it about twenty-ten. It saved us, you know, some mill dollars. It requires a little more, um, oversight, because you have to know when to draw, when, when you need to draw, when, when the taxes are coming, when the aid's coming. But those are relatively predictable. You just have to be, you have to know the bank's practice, and you just, you check it, and, um, it, it works, it's very effective. It's money effective in this current climate.
Any more topic, or any more discussion on those topics? Okay. So you'll see this again in December, and we will slate it for approval then. Next up is a very high-level projection for fiscal year twenty eighteen nineteen. So as we just went through the assumptions, there are numerous unknown factors that are going to come into play when we set the actual twenty eighteen nineteen budget. So this is a very high thirty-thousand-foot field. I plan on updating this every month and bringing it to you if anything changes. So for general funds, so Fund Ten, General Fund, and Fund Twenty-Six, Special Education Fund, we're gonna start out with the twenty seventeen eighteen revenues, and then just adding and detracting any knowing changes. So we're getting two hundred form over dollars per pupil in state aid, uh, which is about four hundred thousand, three hundred ninety-seven thousand. We're also expecting our revenue limit authority to increase by a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Changes to open enrollment transfer amounts, we'll get us twenty-two thousand more. Fund Forty-One levy is under the revenue limit, so it's gonna back out of our general fund revenue. And additionally, we're gonna back out the, um, skylight and lightening damage insurance proceeds. Next up, we have general fund expenses, starting with the same budget amount, backing out the cost of the skylight repair. Based on the current compensation model for certified staff and support staff, we're expecting a hundred and sixty thousand dollar increase. So that's based on the current model, not necessarily what's going to be negotiated. Uh, again, factoring in the cost of open enrolled students out, the increased cost of that. Filling some partial year vacancies, assuming that they'll be filled for the full year. A conservative approach for our health and dental renewal costs, and then some retirees are losing their five years of benefits. So factoring that cost in. So right now, we're looking at a two hundred thousand dollar increase, um, in net revenues over expenses. But again, this is very preliminary. Um, so there are a few, few significant unknowns. Third Friday of twenty eighteen, so next September, that membership number will be a, a significant driver. Our health and dental insurance premium renewal has not been determined. Uh, transportation costs could go up. The, we have now negotiated with WEA, so wage increases could change, and staff retirements, um, if additional staff retired, they become eligible for benefits potentially, so that could also increase. So again, it's a very high-level, um, overview of the twenty eighteen nineteen budget.
If I can add one other thing, you know, I read, they'll sharing, uh, we, we got a lot of new money this year from the state. In the next biennium, uh, our mindset is that we would get zero right now. And so that also, I think, you know, as we talk about looking to eighteen nineteen, it's something that asks the way of the back of our mind. So even though you see some potential positive dollars, right now, we're, we're, we're at zero. And, and that will help us through the future, right, right now, where that would be something we didn't put in here, but, uh, something in the back of our head that's very real, and we talked about it a couple times, and it's the leadership.
Next up is a resolution to authorize American Deposit Management Company as a designated depository for district funds. Currently, the district uses LGIP, which is the local government investment pool. It's a pool that municipalities put the money into, and it's invested by the state. Uh, it yields about one percent right now return. There is a, a competitor, for lack of our terms, to the pool called American Deposit Management. And I think this, this little illustration, uh, defines it best. So we have the money here. We put it into, and it called, an AMMA account, a money market account, at American Deposit Management. And they break that money up into banks, all below the FDIC limit. So we give, for instance, a million dollars to ADM, and then they break it up among five banks below the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar limit. So the LGIP right now, the, the state pool is not a guaranteed fund. It could theoretically lose value. ADM is a, a deposit, uh, a guaranteed deposit, not to lose funds. And on top of the lid, it actually yields typically higher than LGIP by ten basis points, two point one percent. So eventually, an additional two thousand dollars of revenue per year. So it's not a whole lot, but it's actually safer than the pool, and it yields more. Uh, currently, my peers in Beloit and Germantown are using the product, and they're very pleased with it.
There are more schools than just those two?
Yes. Yeah, definitely. Those are just two that I connected to, connected with.
My, my concern when I saw that was, uh, anytime we're giving our money, how much, two million, something?
On average, about two and a half.
About two million dollars to somebody. And then you say, those are our assets, that's our money. And then they're gonna report back to us on an E account that says, your money is there. My concern was antenna just grew up, where you can't see where those, that, those assets are, which bank, and how much, and that sort of thing. But, uh, they do do that.
Yes.
That was not, I didn't see that in the explanation, cause I remember some other E accounts that somebody really didn't tell where the money was, that they were given E reports that the money was there, but it really wasn't. I'm not saying they're doing that, that it's not it, but it's just, uh, I was concerned with an audit that they know that those act, actual dollars are there.
So you can identify the conditions for their deposit.
And that's a plus.
Yep.
Cause when you read the small print on that, that's when it, it started to get a little, but it's been explained, and I think I did a good shit with it. What should we do then?
My recommendation would be to approve the resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the American Deposit Management Company as a designated depository for district funds.
Second.
Is there any other discussion? Jody?
Stewart?
Yes.
Torres? Or I'm sorry. Davis?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
No, we are not.
Last topic in my area right now is, uh, presentation of our OPEP, or Other Post-Employment Benefits Study. This is required by accounting standards that we determine the liability of our, our post-employment benefits, our retirement benefits, benefits every couple of years. So our latest study, we just received the results a few weeks ago. Liability as of the end of fiscal year twenty sixteen is just over four million dollars. So this is, there's a full definition of it, of what that actually represents. It's basically the accrued benefits for our current employees. So what they have earned so far. So the employee classes that, that receive these post-employment benefits are teachers, administrative assistants, administrators, coordinators, support staff, and supervisors. By far the largest class would be the teachers and support staff. And what they receive for post-employment benefits are, if they retire at, at least age fifty-five, and they've been here for fifteen years, and eligible for health insurance for at least fifteen years, they receive twelve thousand dollars per year contributed to an HRA over the course of five years. And if they reach the, the Medicare eligible age, they receive five thousand per year during those years. So there's no action required. This is just to make you aware of what, uh, what certain dollars we're talking about, when we're talking about post-employment benefits. Any questions from that?
Is, is this changed at all?
Truthfully, I did not convert to the last study, but I think I could, that's, I couldn't.
But there were adjustments made in recent times to... Are you talking in terms of the whole dollar value, or in terms of the benefit level?
Well, benefits change with respect to July first, twenty fourteen.
Yeah, it's up here for K.
Yep.
The total liability, I, I would assume stays relatively stable. Some rolls off, some accrues?
Well, it probably changes because of the change in benefit level.
Right.
So this is a study that goes every three years, and if you really wanna dig deep, it'll be in the upcoming on a report, I would imagine, in December. So it's very possible it could have been high, it could have been low. I mean, it's a fair question, Jim. I mean, I would just, you know, it's, it's more of... Next question ideas will be realized. So that's the other.
Not all at once.
Right. Thanks.
All right. Thanks, Matt. Next, we have the consent agenda, which includes minutes approval of the regular meeting, October twenty-third, voucher approval, second reading of the policies as listed. Just part of the normal updating of policies. I don't think there was anything of note there, so. Any questions? All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion of the second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Consent agenda has been approved. Unfinished business first is the use of Fund Forty-One. This is an action item, simple... Memorandums listed there. Did you get that, or...
Yes, there are a couple memorandums listed, um, in board docs. The first one is the one that was at the meeting last month, as well as a clarification provided by legal counsel regarding, um, annual meetings in the Unified School District.
Didn't we decide there's no need though to change it now?
Didn't we decide there's no need, though, to change it now? Like, dispute scope forty-one when it was before? We figured out how to fund what we needed to fund, so why change Fund forty-one?
Well, counsel recommended that we do a revision because it wasn't clear.
Oh, okay.
And that's all it is, was to clarify, I mean,
Okay.
if you read the memorandum, you know, when they say arguably, they're referring to the discussion that occurred, but the motion actually did not require clarifying. And the intent may have not been as clear, so.
I, I, I still have trouble with it, I mean, we're paying big bucks for a lawyer to tell us that it's okay. And so my straight concern is still, for years, we've been, I've been under the impression that the annual meeting for the Unified School District is like the common school, and it meets the requirements of that, and everything that's required for that has always been, that's the big change between a common and a unified, and the unified has to have that annual meeting, and the board has to approve it. And I, I just can't draw a positive conclusion of what they presented. So just realize that that's, that that's out there. That's me. So I'll be voting for whatever comes up.
Well, I think the, okay, well, we need the motion first, unless there's further discussion.
Well, I'd, I'd like to bring up something, and I hate to do this, but is it their supermajority on this? I think I read somewhere in the writing that they're talking, that this motion has said the supermajority. I just, I think there's a question. I, I'm not...
Well, that might be correct.
It, it's something in the reading that said that, did, did you read that?
I did not notice that.
Okay.
But that doesn't mean it doesn't exist.
Do whatever you wish, but if it's a supermajority, then we, we might have a problem. If it's not, no problem.
Yeah, page two, second to last paragraph.
Just delays it a bit.
I can never figure out what two-thirds is happening on.
Did you? I was thinking of that, too. When I, when I saw that earlier, I thought.
Four and a half.
So it, it wouldn't be, well, you can take the vote and see what happens.
Well, we could, unless someone voted against it, then we wouldn't be able to do it.
Right. And I, I told you, that's why I'm... It's unusual that we run into this two-thirds requirement. It's also unusual that we run into this one, two, five, zero.
Well, at the point where the board is the person liked.
Right. It just happens. It's up to you.
Explain to me, I'm sorry. So we are doing this because we wanted to try to fund the sign?
No, not initially, no. This was separate, there, this was in, before the sign and the agenda. So this, this said, the goal of this is just clarifying how we would use it.
Future use.
Future use.
And see, future use would have to pass this DPI statement, right? What, what, what's going to be the motion there?
Well, well, we're clarifying, we're not changing.
That, that's where it was listed.
I think we're changing it by the way, but that's, that's all right. Clarifying is changing, go ahead. I'll stay quiet now.
And we're still using it for construction purposes. So we're clarifying what, we're not changing, changing it from construction to instruction.
I think I know where this is going, but I'll go ahead and make a motion to issue the following resolution, be resolved by the school board that the district's existing capital expansion fund may be used for purposes of financing, remodeling, maintenance, repair, and improvement projects at various district buildings and sites, as well as components of such sites.
Second.
But are we worried that we can't take a vote, Command?
Well, we can take a vote, but I'm, I'm, I'm gonna make a motion that we table this till we seat another board member.
It's up to you.
So it doesn't begin with...
Well, well, it does.
We, we just have to do it again, I know. Either way.
So do whatever you want. You will anyway.
Well, I didn't get a second, so we can...
I have a second.
All right.
Steve seconded it.
Okay, I didn't hear him first.
Jody, you're, I'm just pausing, Jody, do you have it?
Motion to table by Judd and second by Ryan.
Oh, no, I didn't second. Okay, no, we'll second to the...
No, he seconded it.
Okay.
I'll second, Judd.
My motion was until we seat a new board member, so that would be the meeting after.
Absolutely not.
I still want to do it again.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Steve, do you want to withdraw your second?
I don't really want to, but I will.
All right, then we don't need to do it either. So we'll just move on to the next, well, call the roll for my motion, please.
What was the motion again?
That we table it till there's a new board member, see, till we have a full board. Because we need a supermajority already.
Five out of six will all five, wouldn't it, huh?
Yes.
But we don't have that.
Tonight we don't.
Tonight we don't, but we could in December, where we have a...
We'll have a board member on the eleventh.
Right, it puts them at an unfair advantage to...
It, it does, doesn't it?
You know, say, hey, by the way, I mean, most likely, they could abstain, we could have a no vote, and we would still have five, so.
I wasn't thinking of it like that, but you're right, so.
What I just said, it's getting late, sorry.
Yeah, it is.
Well, if we have six or seven, then it's fine.
If we have six or seven.
Well, I'm not, I'm not trying to game it, I just thought it would be...
No, of course not.
So, but I, I probably would prefer that they didn't vote on anything in the first meeting.
The, the question is, we need to change the purpose of forty-one.
Yep.
We can change it if we have a two-thirds, according to this, we can change it at any time we have a two-thirds vote.
Sure, so we can vote on it tonight if...
So we need, we know we need to change it, why aren't we changing? I guess I'll ask you, why, why not, Jim, that we change it with a two-thirds vote?
As I explained earlier, I am not for the idea of the lawyer's interpretation of it, which is difficult for me to say, but I said it, in that a unified school district should be taking care of this with public notice, that we're gonna do this, and that change, as much as you say it's a clarification, it's a change. I still hold that that should be done another time. And there's no big rush for us to take care of it now, because
No, it's not gonna impact the sign at all.
We're not gonna do anything with it now.
So, so.
Right.
The only perspective I'll ask is it allows us to prepare buildings and grounds, I just, as a perspective.
Yes.
It, it's not urgent tonight, I agree, but it will allow us to create a proposal for future buildings and grounds.
I thought I'd explain why, Steve, that's all.
But does this only apply to Fund forty-one, or does this apply to other budgetary items?
Fund forty-one.
Fund forty-one.
Only Fund forty-one, this two-thirds?
No?
No.
No.
Oh, two-thirds.
Budget revisions in general. The other council is saying that this isn't others.
But don't we do budget, budget revisions throughout the year? Already?
None of the three months, no, we did one in March.
But this states the two-thirds majority.
For budget forty-one?
For this.
If you change the purpose.
It, it's the lawyer that said it, I didn't.
But...
No, 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 they cited the statute, he claims.
The statute.
He, he, so if it's financial, they don't believe it's financial.
Right, so they don't believe a supermajority is required, is my interpretation. Because we're not changing the purpose, we're clarifying.
If you believe it's financial, then you believe it's two-thirds. Then I'll go ahead and make a...
Go ahead.
I'll restate my motion, can I just go there to approve as presented?
Do I want to second it again, Steve?
Yes.
All right, Kelly, we're back to my motion, which never got this one done, so I will withdraw my motion.
Sure.
Okay. So the motion is the one that's listed, Jody, so, please call the roll.
Davis?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Stewart?
No.
And there you have it. All right, high school sign design.
Yes. Last one, the board expressed interest in having two pillars with brick between those two pillars. So there was not a mock-up of that design for last board meeting, so we have a new mock-up for you to review and ensure that it meets your wishes.
What do you think?
Which one, is this one the same?
Yep, one of the same, just superimposed at the site.
But it's a little gray with the, oh, sh, nevermind.
Yes, it would be great for the...
Thank you.
Yep.
Well, the difference here, right, is that this one, as opposed to the other one, the other two-pillared sign has the bottom filled in, and that's...
Well, yeah, it's still open.
Yeah, so...
It's a U instead of an H.
Something like that. So I think that's our issue tonight.
What do you think?
That was the original sign we brought when we originally started this.
That's why I looked at twelve.
And we went with the H because we felt it would be less expensive, because we know brickwork is very expensive. The family will be fine with, with that.
With a sign as well?
With a sign. I will stand there and hold the sign. That is, that is very close to what we originally came with. And we opted to take, make it an H.
Right.
Because, you know, it, brickwork is expensive, and we knew that that, the other way, would be less costly.
That's good. So is there any discussion on, I mean, the motion would be to approve this version of the sign. Someone has drawn it, it would be open.
I'll make a motion that we do that.
Okay, let's do that. Jody? Do you have anything to say, Jim?
I'm just wondering how much that's on.
We will, we didn't, we needed to have the sign to get a bid, so, so we'll, we'll just bid out that design.
Judd?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Question then is how soon?
The money moves.
Well, we're in the spring now, from, for concrete and, and mason. We did some preliminary, preliminary checking, and we have one group that has said they will bid on it. You've spoken with...
Small jobs are hard to get.
What's the timeline for bidding?
Ask for quotes.
Yep.
So there's no way we can do this in December?
No, because it asks that, now that we've got that approved, we can let the sign, burly signs know that, well, no, not yet.
You have to go to the city.
Well, I was gonna say city, but I, we'll approve the payment first, so payment in December, then we'll send it to the city in January.
So there's nothing stopping us now.
Hear that, Pam?
Buddy?
You can never say never.
Well, we will deal with it, we probably will talk to the sign contractor as a courtesy, and he can take it to the city, if there's any questions, they can provide us some, some feedback. We'll be respectful of our time, too. We'd like to have our, our best effort.
All right, new business.
So we have several wonderful community organizations, donations over a thousand dollars. I'm sorry, I just gotta click on the right button. So recommended motion is accept a donation of fifty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars from D L K Enterprises, the Ketchel family, to be dispersed as presented.
I'm making a motion to accept the donation from D L K Enterprises to be disbursed, to be dispersed as presented, with great thanks, great donors.
Second. Any discussion? Jody?
McCray?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes, and sincere thank you to the generosity of D L K and the Ketchel family, who've been great supporters of the school district here.
Can we talk about the matching?
Yeah, I was gonna mention two things. One, where did these suggestions come from? District leadership team created a, a list last year, and we continue to use that, as people say, what do you need? So we appreciate, as you know, donors, some things resonate, other things don't, and we just appreciate those when it does, so. There's also a challenge grant out there, so there's, they, for one year, if we get fifteen thousand dollars, if the, if we raise fifteen thousand dollars, then they will also match up with another fifteen thousand for the year. So that's good through October thirty-first, twenty eighteen.
I just, how can you, have we had challenge grants before? Does anybody know? I just, I just, I think it forces the district to go into a money-raising, nothing, we do it all the time, so. Uh, but, um, it's...
Well, presumably, we wouldn't agree to do it if we didn't want to, right?
Well, they've, we've received the money, there's an, they've offered an additional fifteen. So it, the fifty-one thousand is tied to the next fifteen.
Sure.
There's just matching money.
Yeah, they just said there's additional money.
They won't match it if we don't make it.
Right.
Correct, yep. I, I think at lesser scale, it's, it's occurred a little bit in short, in my short time, historically, or... And then also, second generation, recommended action is a motion to accept donation of one thousand dollars from Generac Power Systems to the Faraderma's robotics team. So move.
Second. Any discussion? Jody?
Ryan?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Davis?
I'll abstain, because I work for Generac and helped with the donation.
Judd?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to Generac.
You know, it's generally, I haven't thought about weightlifting.
No.
Powerlifting, sorry.
Stan.
They use a lot of robots anyway.
Another donation, motion to accept a two thousand dollar donation from FIRST, which stands for For Inspiration and Recognition of Science and Technology for the Robotics Team.
I'm making a motion to accept a two thousand dollar donation from FIRST for the robotics team.
Second. Jody?
Stewart?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Thank you to FIRST. Legislative breakfast.
So thank you to Jody for doing some checking when they're in session, not in session. So hopefully, if your calendar's up here, or at least know where you might be on, there are four days that look better than others, January thirtieth or thirty-first. January thirtieth or thirty-first, February sixth or seventh. Probably February.
I'd prefer February.
The January is his third and fourth options?
Enjoy the breakfast without...
I'm going January. What day do you decide?
Six or seven?
Six or seven February?
Preferably the seventh, for me.
Okay.
February seventh?
Six or seven, that'd be great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next is the, we're not voting on that, are we?
No, we're just, no. Just wanted to, one, announce that we continue to do it, two, wanted to have a discussion on what day's work.
All right, next is the Wisconsin Act Nine.
Yes, the IRS has a understanding or interpretation that if you are entitled to compensation as a board member and do not take it, decline or refuse it, you are still to pay income taxes and FICA taxes on it. Yeah, interesting. So the state devised a way that they believe is to counter that, and that was passed this summer. So you, in doing so, to avoid the income tax and FICA taxes, you would annually need to decline your board compensation. So you would make an election one time a year, and that would decline your compensation for the entire year.
And there's no going back, it's irrevocable.
Yes, thank you.
So where's the document you sent?
It may be in there, and I can...
It's on...
It is, did you create that?
It's actually a WASC...
Oh, is it?
I think for the public to understand, like many school boards, we are not here actually, what I call salary, what we get, I consider mileage to and from the median. I know we talked at one time about increasing it, and I'm totally against increasing it. We're not here for making any money, we're here to serve, and our easily amount that we do, I shouldn't say easily, the little amount that we get, as far as I'm concerned, covers mileage to and from the median.
It's interesting, when it was raised to fifteen, it was a big hell of a lot, moving it from ten to fifteen. You know what threw it to fifteen? Was we had a mother with children, and she was paying babysitter childcare, and that was the reason why. If you look at the city council, they get three hundred a month, and we get fifteen dollars, you know?
If we had an annual meeting, I'll stop.
Go, go there. I don't get this, because if I volunteered at a job I could get paid for, I'm not responsible for FICA and taxes, I would... It seems like a bad interpretation, but far be it from me to know what the IRS is up to, so fill out your forms.
One thing is to give whatever you earn.
Right.
Run it back to the school for, and that's...
I think, I, yeah, I think that's maybe part of what that, there's other districts that have donated, like, working events. Part of me wonders if that's related, related to it.
Matt, can you just put a...
Yeah, can you put them, I just tried, I'm not sure. Yep, so you're obligated to do this, if you want to do it, though, you have to do it thirty days before the start of the new fiscal year, so December first. So I found hard to have this, if you want to do it.
All right, next, board communications, legislative liaison report, Kelly?
Can we talk to Mark a little bit over the meeting, it's sort of a slower time, lots of hearings, so.
We look forward to the agenda you're gonna craft for the breakfast.
Yeah, no, I did have space and stuff.
I just edited, no, don't ask him that.
Not a lot of actions could be taken next year anyways, so.
Right.
That's probably right, so there's a list of board opportunities, should you be inclined to take advantage of them, and that would come to the end of our agenda.
Just, just on that board, one thing is the state convention, I'm not gonna be able to attend, and we have, our representative is not coming, not on the board now, you know, a backup, and so we might need somebody to go to the convention to vote on those... Jody already asked me, and I, she didn't ask me to go, she asked me what to do, and I said, I'll do it, so.
Oh, thank you, thank you, Casey, I appreciate that. All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move. Second.
Any arguments? All opposed? All in favor? I'll maybe get some money that time.